All right, good evening. It is 7:02. We will call our meeting to order and we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. Thank you for everybody who is joined remotely this evening. They're with us and we appreciate your patience in advance. All right, item two, approval of our agenda this evening.
I have a couple of additions. Under seven, reports of the superintendent for information. C, the item I'm calling it millage issues. And then I under item eight, L, change venue of 2020-21 board meetings to high school auditorium. Since I don't think this is going to change anytime in the future. And that's it.
I'll make a motion to approve that agenda as changed.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to item three, approval of our minutes from our regular board meeting August 10. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion that we approve the minutes for the regular meeting of August 10, 2020.
Thank you, Janie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kyle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item four, presentation of bills for payment.
I'll make the motion that we pay the board bills for August 2020 in the amount of $769,510.56.
Thank you, Janie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kimberly. Is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. Our bills are approved. Any correspondence?
None.
I heard an echo. Are we live, live? Or are we delayed? Oh, okay. All right. Item six is our hearing of citizens. This is where we will allow those who are in attendance to address the board. If you'd like to address the board, if you could please specify in your comments online that you would like to address the board. And those will be read to us. We'll give a few moments for that opportunity. Does it show that we have anybody attending?
Yeah, we're running. It's streaming slower, so.
Okay.
I just actually stood up a second ago.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Should I make the announcement again, do you think?
Yeah, one more time, please.
So at this time during our board meeting, we will allow our hearing of the citizens for anybody who's attending that would like to address the board, if you could please comment online so that we can address you and hear your concerns.
We have one comment from Emily Leathhead, who you will be approving hopefully later tonight as a teacher for us. Nice to meet you. I'm thrilled to be part of this school community.
Thank you, Ms. Emily, and it is nice to hear you as well.
Although she sounds an awful bit like Ryle. Strange.
Well, they turn into millions after a while.
At least we know we're being heard out there. Thank you for that. Again, we're asking for the opportunity for hearing of the citizens for our board meeting. And one last final opportunity. If there's anybody that would like to address the board virtually, please do so now.
Okay. Thank you. Somebody just said, "I've heard all three announcements," so.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, reports of the superintendent for information to the board.
Administrative reports. If you'll notice, I have a couple extras I asked to be put in there this time. And I'll explain why. We start off with Michelle Clark's report from George Long Elementary. Off to a great start. It's been fantastic to see all the kids back in the building. I love all the noise. We have about 75% to 80% of our students back face to face. Our enrollment is 597. Virtual classes are going okay. There's been a lot of learning by parents in order for them to be able to support their students. The teachers are working very hard and we will get there. I hope that we can return face to face learning very soon. We are fortunate to have Sarah Sherwood back in her tech position as she has been a lifesaver for so many. We are working on benchmark testing for students in reading and math as well as NWA testing. We have lots of work to do as we have some that fell behind over the last six months. Fall count day will be October 7th. Pitcher day will be October 6th. So that's from Michelle. So the next one is from George Long Elementary, Ben Learn. And the reason I asked Ben to write a report this month is because he's been tasked with the job of monitoring all of our testing, which we have to comply with the order to have everybody benchmark test in 90 days, so we wanted to have that report to view that you knew we were doing it. So if you, testing has begun in K through 8 in accordance with mandated guidelines. Students will finish their initial Northwest assessments by the end of the month. We're testing all virtual students as well. Mrs. Jenkins has put the middle school virtual schedule and is working with the middle school families on a smooth testing environment. The virtual teachers at George Long are presenting resources to families to prepare them for the new adventures of virtual testing. We will be conducting mid-year assessments after winter break and at the end, once again at the end of the year in spring. Additional benchmark testing has also begun, K through 5. The students are getting additional testing in MobiMax, Lexia, Infantis, and Penel, F and P. So if you look at the second to last tag, we will be conducting mid-year assessments after winter break. According to the guidelines from the legislation, which you hopefully will approve our COVID learning goals later on, we have to give you a mid-year report as to how we're progressing as well as the end of year report. We can't really do that unless we have some type of testing results completed, so we're going to, that's why we'll be testing again after the winter break. So you will be able to provide a winter mid-year report and then we'll do it again at the end for an end year report. Okay? And that'll be K through 8. This testing is K through 8. Okay? So you'll find, if you'll notice, we'll talk about later on the COVID learning goals, we have goals for 9 through 12 as well. Those weren't required. We did them because we felt it was necessary to keep everyone on the same page. So, okay? Grass Lake Middle School, Northwest Testing, comment again. We have 80 virtual students. Mrs. Choate, Mrs. Malmo, Mrs. Bott, and Mrs. Ambergeri have been doing a amazing job in checking in our agenuity students and grading assignments. Mrs. Choate, Mrs. Allen, Mrs. Berg have been doing RTI with students who needed additional help in academics. Mrs. Totof and her husband Andy had a beautiful daughter just before school started. Baby and family are doing great. Lunches have been working well. Students are spread out between the cafeteria and the gym. We have three lunches this year. See. Mrs. Jenkins has created a mental health screener that all students will be taking monthly. Okay? High school. Okay, start of the school year has gone well as possible. Students have done a great job adjusting to new expectations and safety protocols at the high school. Mr. Zalid and Mr. Thompson are in regular communication with the online population. Most of them are performing at a quality level. Obviously, you've heard, the MHSA has given the go-ahead for all fall sports to begin competitions. The high school staff is working on devising a plan to incorporate some type of spirit week during the fall that would coincide with a football game. Even though students are not allowed to attend the games, the spectators, we are still attempting to develop a high level of school spirit and pride. SAT and PSAT will be taking place in the month of October. Quiz Bowl team will be competing again this, starting this, this fall, starting in October. And Mrs. Jance is developing to have a fall theater production. This is still in the planning phase. It could be including some virtual stuff. He didn't write that, but that was the discussion we had. Teachers are working diligently to expand their learning strategies when it comes to virtual instruction. This is essential for our Wednesday virtual day and in preparation of possibly going, being totally virtual at some point in the future. The work our teachers have done in the past four years since implementing a one-to-one philosophy puts us well ahead of many of the schools in our area. Our teachers are truly demonstrating what it means to be leaders in educational technology. Okay? Then because of the MHSA shift, I asked Brian Zalid to send a report as well. And he basically, there will be, we have approved the go-ahead to have fall sports. There are stipulations that must be followed. The most important is there are only two spectators allowed per athlete. For each contest, the athlete, not a parent, must come to the athletic office, middle school, office, middle school athletes, and give the names of the two spectators. Payment of $5 per spectator is required at the time of providing the names. Exact change or check is required. No general admission will be allowed at any event. Parents are not to call the athletic office to hold spots. Masks are required at all events. And thanks to the Warrior Club, we have streaming cameras coming for the football field and high school gym, so we'll be able to livestream some of the athletic events for those who can't make it. We are not able to install at Stoker because there is no hard-line internet access up there. Also, limited spectators this year. The conference has decided not to have any passes. Okay? Food service. I asked Kelly to send an update to you on food service. This is due to the fact there's been a change in the free and reduce program. I'll leave this to you to read, but the gist of it is, is that the free and reduce program that we had throughout the summer has been extended through December 31st. So this is going to increase the number of meals that we serve throughout the day. We've already started to see it. So she's working diligently in many, many long hours, which is why you'll see something I'm recommending later. And it's been a very good transition. I do not know, I will speak highly of this before we get there, what we would have done without Kelly Bolton in this position this year. She has been phenomenal in every way. So, okay? Buildings and grounds and operations, cleaning supplies and hand sanitizer have been provided in every occupied area in our buildings. Lunch areas have been expanded and resulting in many areas that require cleaning and maintenance. Additional cleaning and maintenance is being completed in all areas beyond our normal tasks. After-school sports have now been added to our workload, which is resulting in additional changes in shift times. Credit goes to our custodians for their flexibility throughout these ongoing transitions. Transportation, as is the case across the United States, we are in desperate need of drivers. I am driving a full-time route and the two employees who can substitute for me are both full-time in their respective positions within the school district, with both being extremely busy. Note, because of our driver shortages, our bus mechanic has full-time responsibilities for getting our Career Center students delivered every day. Credit goes to our drivers, current drivers who come to work every day and do a wonderful job. Bus cleaning, sanitizing is done after every run. Masks are worn by everyone on our bus routes and every individual receives hand sanitizer when boarding. We are using our virtual Wednesdays to deep clean our buses where every surface is being cleaned. Okay? Any questions on those? Okay, great. So, B, my college access. This is just kind of for your knowledge. We received a grant for $2,300, which we used to, for College Day and Grad Day and asked for the, in the graduation ceremony. Okay? So we were very fortunate to receive that. The last one, C, this is just for your information. Not that one. I'm going to hand out some handouts. Probably handing out more than I need to, but. There, I got, I think that's seven. Okay, if you look at, this is, this is our annual tax rate request. And I've done it, I've given you three of them, 2018, 2019, and 2020. The kicker, seven years ago, when we passed the millage, we passed the millage to the point so that we would have 18.4419 mills. So there was a cushion in case our property taxes grew so that, you know, and if, the way it works, if your property taxes grow, they have a Headley rollback, a rollback so you can't, your property taxes can't go over the rate of inflation. Okay? So there was a cushion. And talking to our attorneys, the cushion was supposed to last 10 to 12 years. So, but the most mills you can put are 18. So if you look down in the bottom right-hand corner, it says for all other, 18. Okay? So that's 18 mills that we used in 2018. If you go to 2019, for all others, it says 18. Okay? So now go to 2020. 17.6786. That's a problem. Okay? So Mike Gressens, who's the attorney from Thrun, says he's never seen a reduction of that size before. And that's because our property taxes here in Grass Lake are soaring. And that's because new houses are going up and the houses that are being sold are being sold for much higher than they are, so the property taxes are going up. So our rate of property taxes increase is basically blown right by the rate of inflation. So this is going to continue. And that means this number here in the bottom right-hand corner is going to get less and less. So sometime in the next two or three months, throughout the next two or three months, we're going to have to sit down as a, with a committee and decide if we want to take a millage to the community at the first of, in May, and to what extent it is. I have Mike, the attorney from Thrun, working on the language right now. I'm working on some figures for us. He's going to give us four or five different options that we could look at. But this number here, 17.67, we figured out that hit or miss, we might be wrong. We were doing it on our own. It's probably cost us about $20,000 this year. And that figure is going to continue to grow every year.
And it's exponential.
And it's exponential, right.
So if we do nothing next year as far as get a Headley amendment?
Right.
Then that number that we're, will be missing will be 80 to 100,000.
Right. So that'll be, and by the way, this millage goes till 2033. The one that's been passed that we're covering. So we were kind of thinking that this would be good until 2023, 2024. We didn't make it through 2020. So something, you know, I'm sure, you know, nobody projected that the taxes would blow up like they did. And the property taxes would increase and that we would grow the way we've grown and, you know, the new buildings and everything. So this is something we're going to have to keep in mind and we're going to have to take into consideration because, as Tim said, it's going to, it's going to start hitting us harder in the future, so we're going to want to nip that in the bud as soon as we can. So I'll be getting ahold of Amy and a couple other board members to be involved with it, probably Janie since she's the treasurer. And we'll have to come up with a plan for how we're going to address this. Okay?
So this will be, it's either the third or fourth time in the 20 years that I've been associated with the board that we've had to go back to Headley and get this Headley amendment. It's just something that's a natural byproduct of the way that the taxes are collected and the algorithm that's in play. And, you know, there were, there were years ago, some districts who elected not to go back and ask for the millage increase. And within a year or two, they were at the polls because it grows so, so quickly, you know, that they just, they weren't prepared.
So this is.
It's best to nip it in the bud as soon as it gets underway.
So this is how quick it hit us. Last year, Tim, if you remember, mentioned it, and I went and talked, checked it out and checked and was told, "You're fine. You don't have to worry about it." Okay? Obviously, with this one year, we, our taxes went through the roof in this kind of community, and so now we have to worry about it. So that's a huge shift and change in one year. So, okay?
What's the high-level concept? Why does it go down with property values going up?
It's called the Headley rollback. The way it figures out, Tim, you're going to have to help me on this because I don't, I'm just starting to get a grasp on it. It's been a long time since I've done this.
Sure.
The Headley rollback is that your property taxes are, go up. So if your property taxes go up 5%, and your rate of inflation is only 1.5%, that's a 3.5% that you lose in your property taxes, and that's where that comes out of here, right here. So that's, so basically, that would be the difference. So it was probably a 5% increase and we had a rate of inflation of 1.5% this year, and so there's your 3.5. 3.216, I think, is what I figured it out to be.
If you go back and look, the Headley amendment actually has to do with people who own property or second pieces of property within your community. And, and the idea was to, so that those individuals don't have to pay such exuberant taxes and never take advantage of the, of the, you know, the, the things that go on in that community that the taxes cover. So that was the intent. So this, so this amendment was real popular, especially up north, you know, Higgins Lake and such. Unfortunately, it has a side effect. It has this, this continuous reduction of your base. And, and the only way to correct it is to go back to the community and ask for a millage to make this Headley correction. And it, and that's what it's called. It's called a Headley correction, so. I don't remember when the bill was actually passed the first time, but we've been dealing with it for the 20 years I've been around, so.
74, 74, 70.
74.
Yeah, okay. I knew it's been a while.
Yeah. So, so we're going to have, well, I'll get more information on it. This is something that Chanel and I just kind of started really, really looking into in the last month. So, and to be honest with you, I, in, in all my years, I've never had to do a Headley correction. You know, the districts that I was working in, the property taxes were going down, not going up, so. So this is the first time I've had to, you know, really, really delve into having to worry about the Headley correction. So we'll, we'll get a lot of information on it and get it to you as soon as we can, okay? Okay? But that was just something I wanted to put on your radar.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you can keep those.
And I just want to say the administrative reports were very thorough and.
And I just wanna say, the administrative reports were very thorough and gave our staff a lot of compliments, so that was really appreciated for all the administrators that did those. I enjoyed reading them. I'm sure everybody else did. Okay, moving on to Item 8, Reports of the Superintendent for Action. Item A, Resolution of Board of Education to Staff.
Okay. With our committed staff, it was brought to my attention to be a nice, a nice move for us to make a resolution of appreciation and complimenting our staff for their dedication to the schools. So, this is something I put together. What we'll do is if you agree to pass this, we'll, I'll scan it, send it to each, each of the staff members in our district, and we'll post it on our webpage as well. So, so whereas Grass Lake Community Schools is extremely fortunate to have a dedicated staff committed to the mission of the district, and whereas staff members have and continue successfully address new challenges that have been presented by the COVID-19 pandemic and presenting content to the students of Grass Lake Community Schools, and whereas the Grass Lake staff continue to challenge students through a variety of instructional methods to meet academic standards while ensuring the students' social and emotional needs are met, and whereas we, as the members of the Grass Lake Community School Boards of Education, wish to extend our utmost appreciation for the work that these staff members have done to make education an exciting and joyous experience for the students of our district, and now therefore let it be resolved that the Grass Lake Community Schools' Board of Education recognizes and appreciates the service of those employees throughout this demanding time in education. Grass Lake staff members recognize Grass Lake Community Schools' teacher, Grass Lake Community Schools' support staff, Grass Lake Community Schools' administration. This resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded in the minutes of the Grass Lake Community Schools' education on this day, the 14th of the month of September in the year 2020. And this is something that Amy sent me an email about and said, "This is something we need to think about." And I thought it was a great idea. So, okay?
I'll make that motion that we go forward with that resolution.
I'll second. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Kimberly. Any further discussion? Comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the Resolution of Board of Education to Staff? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Good idea. Well done.
Passes? Very nice. Thank you.
So, I'll send this down. You can sign it.
Okay.
Okay? You get to sign this one, too. Extended COVID-19 learning plan, this is what the legislation's requiring us to put together. Goals, K through 8. So, some of the school districts just did goals, K through 8 as a general thing. We broke it down to our buildings. So, we have two goals for the elementary school, two goals for the middle school, and two goals for the high school. The high school did not need to have a goal, okay? But we decided, Brian came through with a couple of goals for us that he thought were applicable to us. The difference between the goals for the elementary school and the middle school and the high school is that the high school, we can do stuff with staff members, the middle school and the elementary school have to tie directly to the education of the students and the testing of the students. So, they have to be measurable goals. So, if you look at... So used to touching my mouth. Okay, there's an opening statement here. Basically, it, they gave us a, a template that we had to come up with. You're more than welcome to read that. You don't want me to spend the next 30 minutes going through this. So, the educational goals for George Long Elementary, I'm steaming up. Okay, we have to have a goal for mid-year and a goal for the end of the year. For George Long Elementary, Goal 1, Mid-Year All Goal Student, All Students K through 5 will improve performance and reading in ELA from fall to winter as measured by Northwest Educational Association, NWA, and Fontis-Pennell. End-of-year goal, All Students K through 5 will improve performance in reading in ELA from fall to spring as measured by Northwest and Fontis-Pennell. Reading Monitor, Reading Fluency and Comprehension Using Record, Running Records. Use Formative Assessments to Adjust Teaching and Learning Individualized Instruction. Use Lexi as Lessons. Benchmark Beginning, Middle, and End of the Year Using FMP. Northwest Testing Beginning, Middle, End of the Year. Provide RTI Services for Students Below Grade Level. Mid-year goal, All Students K through 5 will, this is Goal 2, will improve performance in Mathematics from Fall to Winter as measured by NWA. All Students K through 5 will improve performance as the end of the year goal in Mathematics from Fall to Spring as measured by NWA. Northwest, NWA Test Beginning, Middle, and End of Year. Use Mobi to Benchmark, Assess and Assign Assignments. Meet Monthly at Grade Levels to Assess and Adjust Teaching and Learning Individualized Instruction. Provide RTI Services for Students Below Grade Level. So, you might notice that there's no specific number, like grow one and a half years of growth or something like that. The reason for that is we don't have a baseline, 'cause we had not done any testing. But we have to have this in before our baseline testing has to be completed. So, they kinda put the cart before the horse a little bit on this legislation. So, we had to make it more general. And then, of course, our goal is always to have students to improve one full grade level at least, but you can't really, since we don't know where they are, due to the regression or any of the things that have occurred over the last six months, we left them a little bit more general. Okay? Any questions on those goals?
In that opening paragraph, though, it says that we've used the Northwest for the last five years.
We have.
And so, couldn't that be used as a baseline?
No, because the last time we gave the test was last winter. So, we don't know about any regression that's occurred from March until... Every year, research proves that students regress throughout the summer, even for just that three months. Okay? And we actually went six months without any type of structured instruction. So, you know, I mean, we granted, we did what we could with the virtual stuff, but we were still learning at that time, you know, how to do stuff. So, there, we know there's been regression over the last, over the last six months. So, the baseline is actually where they, where they would have been tested in the fall. That's why we test every year in the fall and in the middle, in the winter, in the, in the spring, so we can kinda gauge where our, how, what our growth is and we can look at where we're at. We don't have, if we use last winter's baseline, my guess it would be significantly higher than they probably are right now. And that would have been, you know, we would have shown regression on our testing. So, we don't have a real baseline right now. We don't know where the kids are. We don't know what type of impact this layoff has had on them until we get done with the Northwest testing at the end of the month.
So, you, you answered another one of my questions, is how frequently do we do the Northwest? And you're saying we, over the past five years, we've done it three times a year?
K through 5, we do it three times per year. K, 6 through 8, we do it in fall and spring.
Okay. So, for the, the George Long Elementary, then it also notes benchmark beginning, middle, and end, a beginning, middle, and end of year using FMP.
Right.
The Fontis and Pennell.
Fontis and Pennell. It's another baseline test as well.
Test as well.
It gives you two things to compare.
Are we gonna inundate our K through 5 with...
What do you mean going to? What do you mean going to? This has been going out for years.
This is standard.
Oh, that...
This is standard.
The, the FMP as well?
Oh, yeah.
As the Northwest?
No, no, we do them both. We do, we do them both all year. The FMP takes, is, takes, it takes some time, but it's, it's a different type of, of, looks at different type of skills. And so, it gives you a different gauge that you can kinda integrate the two tests together to get a real good baseline on what kids are.
My concern was is that we...
Yeah, we're testing forever.
We spend so much time testing, we don't learn?
So, basically, this is not new.
Yeah, no.
We've always done it.
No child left behind.
I was gonna say, no child left behind. Let's throw that in there.
You can think that.
Just are documenting it, that it is part of the state plan.
Yeah, this is, this, these tests are nothing new. Mobi Max for, for math is nothing new. We've been doing it for a long time. So, you know, it just, they, the difference is, is now we're actually identifying when we're gonna do the testing, whereas with Fontis and Pennell and Mobi Max, we were kinda more like integrating them in the curriculum throughout the year, where we were reliant more stringently on Northwest testing as our baseline. Okay? Okay?
Then I, I guess the other, other question I had, it says define, or I wrote, define will improve. How, how do you define will improve?
Define, any growth, any student growth is improvement.
You're just looking for an upward trend of scores?
Upward trend, yeah. And we, and like I said, we, it's hard for us to establish how fast that upward trend's gonna be because we don't really have a baseline.
Sure.
If we'd have had a baseline and we'd have found out that they were, that they regressed a half a year, then we could probably project that our upward trend would be pretty quick for the first three months. And then you start to see more of a, a regular type of growth. But we don't know. So, I mean, we don't really know. That's the, you know, nobody knows. That's, the discussion at a lot of superintendent's meetings is nobody really knows exactly what to expect.
The impact, yeah.
And we were very fortunate. I think we were, we did, we did it better than most people did last spring. So...
So, the idea of being vague, saying we will improve, will allow us to develop a baseline and then at mid-year, we can then retroactively speak to our progress.
Right, right, yeah.
And that meets the state requirement.
Right, actually monthly.
But we have to report to the board on mid-year?
I have to report monthly.
To us? Oh, yeah, yeah, 'cause we're adding it to the agenda. You're right.
Yeah, so every month...
So, we'll get an update every month?
Every month, you'll get some type of review of, you know, and, and it's not gonna be real specific in every case because we don't do Northwest testing every month. So, but you'll know that we're continually looking at different things that we're doing throughout the, the year, or at least the first half of the year. And then we'll reevaluate in the middle of the year. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, can we get a motion? Were you finished describing?
Nope.
I'm sorry, go for it.
Middle school goals, all 6 through 8, same thing, same type of language, regular monitor reading fluency, end of the year, same type of language, regular monitor reading fluency and comprehension using running records. Use formative assessments to adjust teaching and learning, individualized instruction. Northwest testing, again, provide remedial instruction. Mid-year goal, too, all students 6 through 8 will perform in mathematics to fall, from fall to winter as measured by Northwest testing. End-of-year goal, same thing, only from fall to spring, same tools. The high school, 75% of the high school students will demonstrate growth in the content areas that are directly assessed a PSAT, SAT score during the classroom instruction from fall to winter. Assessments will be conducted through PSAT and SAT-specific tasks directly targeting PSAT and SAT preparation. So, what the difference is here is there's no real baseline. We get, we give them the, the PSAT test, and then at the end of the year, they get the SAT test. And then the way we're going to assess them is that as the teachers integrate SAT strategies into their lesson plans, they'll be, do the assessments there to find out if they're improving, if they're learning how to do, take, actually take the test and, and do it. It's, with the SAT, it's almost as much learning how to take the test as it is knowing the content.
Yeah.
So, okay? And then, same thing with the end of the year. And then, 100% of our Grass Lake teachers will expand their virtual lessons, designs, and learning strategies throughout the 2021 school year and be able to demonstrate expansion through lesson plans, end observations, and walkthroughs. Okay? We're expecting the teachers in the high school to step it up even another step when it comes to teaching virtually. Okay? Now you can.
All right. And you've had that in your packet as well, so is there a motion for the COVID learning goals? And this is technically an amendment? Or...
No, just a motion to approve the COVID learning goal.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? I guess the only question I would have, Dr. Kaiser, is our teaching staff, what's the communication so that they're aware of the, the goals and the, the work that we're required to hold them accountable?
When you guys approve it, we'll probably scan the whole thing in. We have to post it on our webpage.
Okay.
We have to post this entire plan on our webpage. But we'll probably scan it and just shoot it to everybody's thing, see it through and keep, and have it as our, as an electronic copy of their own. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the learning goals that we discussed? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, that passes. Onto Item C.
Item C, Supplemental Contract for Kelly Bolton, Food Services Director. As I mentioned earlier, Kelly has been a rock throughout this entire COVID experience. Since March, she stepped up the plate, took on the free and reduce throughout the summer, provided, I mean, for a while there, we were doing 7,000 meals a, a week. And now, with the change in the law regarding free and reduce, she's been asked to do it again. So, we paid her $5,000 supplemental contract for her time and the extra effort that she put in, 'cause she's, she literally lived here for the summer. For, for that, now they're, I'm asking for the same type of recognition and, and to award her for the, the time she's committed with the same type of contract right now.
She didn't get fired though.
Huh? Oh, she didn't? What'd she get?
Twenty-three hundred. It was a percentage.
Oh, a percentage. We're giving 5,000 on this one, right? This is 5,000. Sorry. Okay? So, that's my recommendation is that we, that you approve a supplemental contract to Kelly Bolton for $5,000 to get from the time now and through December 31st. And that's hopefully when, not hopefully, but it's probably when this will end.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kimberly.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kyle. Any discussion?
What ancillary staff was impacted?
What ancillary staff?
I'm sure she didn't do it on her own.
Yeah, they worked their regular hours. And then if they were expected to give extra hours, they, we paid them the, the time for their hours they were doing, which was very rare. They pretty much just worked their regular hours.
Okay.
Good question.
Didn't wanna leave anybody out.
No.
Right. Good question. Isn't there, is that, what kind of funding is that? Is that just in our normal budget? Or is there...
That comes right out, that comes out of the food service budget, which right now is loaded.
That's, that's important to say because...
It doesn't come out of the general fund. This comes out of the food service budget, which has to be spent on food service, and we have to spend it in a year. So...
Right. Yeah, I think it's important to call that out.
Yeah. It's the first time in a long time that that department's had money.
And that wasn't your communication to us?
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the supplemental contract for Kelly Bolton, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, Kelly, and your team for all you do. Item D.
Okay, item D and E, but they have to be done separately. I'm looking ahead, so we have to do a mid-year report on the extended learning plan, which you just approved. So, we're gonna have to have a special board meeting at the end of January for that to happen. So, January 25th, 2021 is when I've recommended that you schedule that board meeting for. And then we're gonna have to do the same thing with number E at the end of the school year.
I'll make a motion that we schedule that meeting on January 25th, 2021.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Kimberly.
You're welcome.
Is there any discussion? I guess my question would be why we wouldn't incorporate that into the regular meeting?
First of all, because the regular meeting's gonna be too soon after we get back for for us to actually complete the Northwest testing after winter break, yeah.
I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
Sure you had a reason.
Yep.
Adding that into our calendars now.
Are we looking at doing it at 7:00?
7:00.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of items D and E to add special meetings on January 25th and May 24th of 2021, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Jim.
Both items D and E pass. And moving on to item F.
Count day, October 7th and February 10th. So when we approved our calendar to go Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, count days on Wednesday, of course. So in talking to the auditor from the ISD, not having school and having everybody go virtual is going to make it extremely difficult. We have to jump through a bunch more hoops in order to get the kids in count. So, and if they're absent that day, let's say, say that they choose not to log in or something occurs where they can't log in on that virtual day, that even adds more hoops. And the timeline for virtual students is that we have to prove that they're part of it is significantly less than it is for the regular students who are here throughout the day. For a student who's here, and if we were to just have school on October 7th and they were absent, we have 30 days in order to make that count good. Without jumping through any hoops, he just has to show up again, or she has to show up again. So in order to simplify the count day issue, my recommendation is, is that particular week on October 7th, and I also put down the February 10th date in thinking that we probably might be in the same boat, that we make those full days and we go five days that week for count day. Do you understand?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Should we just make them come every Wednesday to make sure that they're covered?
Yeah. Actually, that is, that is one of the number one emails I get, is when are you going to open it?
Speak like a truth parent.
Go five days.
I'm no pro.
Yeah. So we need a motion for that, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Janie. Thank you, Eric. Any further discussion? So those of you who have logged in to our meeting, please note that we are going to be voting on October 7th and February 10th for your children to attend face-to-face, which is a change to the normal schedule.
Virtual kids will still be virtual.
Virtual, yes, virtual will still be virtual.
Yep.
But please log in.
Yes, but please log in.
Please log in and it counted that day. All those in favor of the two dates? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. Item G.
Resignation of Ashley Dowell. Ashley has chosen to take a year off in hopes that we will have a job next fall that she can reapply for to care for her child. So she was newborn last June, so...
Can I get a motion for that resignation?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim, thank you, Kimberly. Any further questions or concerns, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Moving on to item H, resignation of Nellie Smitherberg.
I don't have a comment on that, so...
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kimberly.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janie. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item I.
Hiring of Emily Leathhead. In the little biography that Michelle sent you, she comes to us from Kalamazoo with 10 years of teaching experience. She is a graduate from Western Michigan University. She recently completed her master's degree through Spring Arbor and holds a reading specialist qualification. She'll be relocating to Grass Lake, and we're very happy to have her join our team. She will be, she is currently teaching the third grade.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Janie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome to the team, Emily. Item J.
Hiring of Rebecca Brown. Rebecca is a third-grade teacher. This is from Ben. Rebecca comes to us from Quincy with three years of teaching experience. She was an Eastern Michigan graduate. She recently completed her master's degree through Western Michigan University. She is a Grass Lake graduate and is looking forward to coming back to the community.
Can I get a motion for Rebecca Brown?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kyle.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Ms. Rebecca Brown. Nice to have a Grass Lake graduate. Item K. Hiring of Jessica Charles, Special Education Aid.
Jessica Charles will be taking the position of Nellie Smitherberg.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Kimberly.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Welcome, Jessica Charles. Item L.
Okay, so due to the change of our venue, we've been meeting at George Long, but I think we'll probably have to continue to meet here until further notice. So in January, when you passed your school board meetings, you said they'd be at George Long, so now we need to have approval to change the venue for the remainder of the 2021 school board meetings to here in the auditorium. So, and we'll stream whenever we can, and we'll have people in the crowd whenever we can, but this is probably the better facility for that right now.
All right, can I get a motion for the change of venue?
I'll make that motion for the change of venue.
Thank you, Janie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kyle. Any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have our venue. And item nine, unfinished business?
I don't have anything.
I had one further thought in regards to item F. The default position is for parents to have their kids at home for the face-to-face attenders. So it would probably warrant, you already probably have this in your plans of just making sure that we're very effective in communicating to parents.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's going to have a very negative effect.
It's counting.
If they just, you know, default to...
They're going to get tired of hearing from us. Yeah, we'll be sending out the phone calls, we're going to send out emails, we're going to post up on our Facebook page, we're going to post, post up on our webpage.
Doug's all over it, I'm sure.
Doug, Doug will help us get all over it, you know?
I don't honk.
We'll be knocking on their door, getting them out of bed.
We'll be doing the best we can to get as many people out of here as we can. So, you know, send stuff home with the kids in their bags from the elementary school. Yeah, we'll, we'll have, since it's a change and there's like three weeks to go, we'll be hitting it hard for the next three weeks. So, okay?
I had one other item, and that is the GLEA contract extension. Noted that we were going to meet a month before 12:31. Has that been scheduled?
Not, not as of yet. We're waiting actually to find out what happens with count day being in, in the budget, in the state budget. So once we get the better idea where we're with count and stuff like that, we'll start scheduling to negotiate. So we're not the only ones in this boat. I mean, there's a number of school districts that are sitting...
About 470.
Sitting, looking, and the Uniserve rep, there's only one of them. So I think he's, we'll probably wait till the last minute to schedule that when he's available, and then we'll just have to jump through the hoops for him, okay?
And it really won't be a matter of Grass Lake schools having to schedule that.
Yeah.
The union is going to be right on top of that.
Yeah.
Because it behooves them.
Right.
So...
It's definitely their interest.
You can scratch, you don't have to worry about that. It'll happen.
Do you by chance have an update for the entire board as a whole on the solar project?
Okay, so the solar project, that's a good point. So the solar project's dying, it looks like it's a dying bird. First of all, I had a long talk with our attorneys, Frederick, you can never remember Frederick's last name. Frederick is a, the attorney who kind of runs all this stuff through Thrun. They do not suggest using anybody else's PPA except for one that's been designed by them because theirs tends to, they found out the PPAs proposed by some of the companies tend to be a little bit more favorable to the company and not quite as favorable to the education situation. So, and then in, and in the PPA, they oftentimes build in the attorney fees to be covered by the company and not the school district. And the low baseline for Thrun is 20 grand. So to do that and to do everything else, and they do, basically, they commit themselves to you for 25 years with no other fees. So when it comes to a buyout, and you want to buy out the facility or buy out the platforms or whatever they call them, the grids, they'll help you negotiate it. There will be no extra cost to the school district at that time. But 20 grand's a pretty hefty number, and I don't, we don't think Solar Harvest is interested, and they, they're, they're not going to want to do that, is our impression. So, and to be quite honest with you, we don't want to spend 20 grand either. But the, you know, the savings to us would be minimal then.
And that was new information you discovered, right?
Just last week, at the end of last week. So, so we contacted Solar Harvest. We have not heard officially back from them that they're not interested, but as far as I'm concerned, that, that's hitting a slide that we're not going to be able to stop. So it was a great idea, would have worked out well, but, you know, would have been cool to see solar panels on our district, but...
Very good.
Cool is not 20 grand, so a minimum of 20 grand, so...
With the time that we've invested in the committee, would Harvest be interested in taking a look at the PPA you suggested?
Well, that would cost us 20 grand just to get it.
It would cost us?
It would cost them or us 20 grand just to get it.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So it really, I mean, they would have to do some creative thinking in terms of cost sharing and come back if they were interested in adopting...
Right.
The PPA that, that you were suggesting.
Doug's, Doug's talking to them to see where we are.
Very good.
But, yeah, it's kind of, I'm not going to say it's slight, how about it's in a holding pattern right now? Would be a better way of phrasing it. Declining to land, maybe, so, yeah.
And you bring up a good point, Kyle, because yourself and the committee and Doug